That longer stuff, I don't know if he's starting to preferentially avoid it just because it's a little more work to eat.
Okay.
So that's the, that's the only kicker. Certainly more temperamental about being away from his friends and with everything else looking good. Um, I think it's probably in his best interest to go home versus stay here because my suspicion is that it's our potential pickup at home.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, if anything else peed off about him, I'd say let's keep him, but. Everything else has really been going wild.
Okay. All right, um, so he didn't.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Um. So it sounds like he didn't even finish the bag. My husband left to feed yesterday.
Hey, sorry, I missed some of that got garbled.
I said, it sounds like he didn't even, um.
No, yeah, that bag of feed. And he tried mixing it in with some of the alfalfa and he kind of, I think he took a couple of bites and then he just left the rest of that pan. And I tried chucking it, throwing it in a new handful and he's not, not into it. I think it's, I mean, it's still worth it to take it home with you, obviously, and try again at home and see if he's more intrigued by that at home, but certainly. Here he has not been into it.
Okay.
Just been doing the little, like, so the alfalfa leaves and the little short bits of, of grass hay that kind of fall out of the bales.
Okay. All right. Well, it all sounds good. I'm, I'm just worried, you know, obviously about him, um, being able to sustain himself. Um.
Yeah.
So, okay. Well, I appreciate the update. Thank you very, very much, Dr. Stein. And, um, would you prefer, uh, if I call, um, before?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, sounds good. We'll save travels tomorrow and we'll, we'll see you then.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too. Bye.
Do you say anything, Adam? Okay, I'm, Shane is muted. Yes, I would like to call to order area heights planning commissioners meeting January twenty second at six oh two P M. And I would like to apologize to everybody that we had to cancel the last meeting due to weather. So hopefully we can make it up today. Uh, roll call commissioner Patel present, Commissioner Shane fail.
He said, um, just a minute ago on chat.
You, you should be on the meeting now, Sean.
Uh, Commissioner Art Butt.
I'm here.
Commissioner Mark Collins.
President.
I think Shane's on the call. He just texted us. So I'm gonna. If everybody's here, we're gonna move to the next item. His place of Atlantis when we're ready. I. I pledge Alaska flag, the states of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God. Thank you. Anybody want to call a motion to approve today's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second.
Uh, any discussions or any changes we need to make? If no changes, uh, we'll take a word to approve it. All in favor?
I.
All in favor? Uh, next motion for the minutes of the last meeting. Which was on, uh, computer.
The Sean's still having mic issues, uh, until we can get that figured out. Sean, if you just want to use the text and raise your hand kind of thing until we can get the mic going.
Like to get a motion, uh, for, for the minutes of the last meeting in December.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
And I'll second.
Any discussions or any corrections? If none, we'll move toward all in favor.
I.
All in favor? Uh, do we have any, uh, public comments tonight? Zach?
Uh, none that were recorded beforehand. If anybody has public comments, please type them into the chat. I know there are some members of the public here. So let me know if you would like to speak and I can.
Just as a reminder for members of the public, this is an opportunity to speak on any topic except an item that appears on the agenda.
Uh, if we don't have any, uh, we'll wait like fifteen seconds if anybody last minute has any comments. If not, then, uh, move to the next item. Still having computer problems. If there's no public comments, I'd like to close that and move to the presentation for tonight. Uh, Fairfield Air Force Base A P Z and Sound Contours by Jamie.
Let me get this up, Jamie. I'm gonna get you.
I love technology when it doesn't work. Yeah, she started four o'clock.
So, um, this isn't A P Z and contours. This is a response to, uh, Mr. Bubbs' request to see why flight, uh, flights go in. Over the top of where Lawson Street is or something. And so I wanted to show, um, where all of our flight paths are. And so you could see, like, all of our pilots have to do training and they don't just do training coming down. One, uh, single way. They have to do it doing several different routes. And so I wanted you to see. And you can go to the next slide. Um, I wanted you to see the visual patterns which are pilot proficiency training, which they're just looking and observing where they are. And so I showed those visual patterns and, and zoomed into Fairchild and Airway Heights. And then I also wanted to show you the instrument. Patterns. And that's where they're just using their instruments and they're not using their, um, ocular anything. They're just using their instruments to fly their aircraft. And so. There's quite a few and it's, uh, I was, I, uh, probably would be surprised if ever you to see all of the different patterns that there are. And then, um, just some fun facts that we have over two hundred and fifty pilots at Fairchild and, um. Six thousand flying hours a year combined for all of them. So it's, it's quite a bit of flying time. And so, um, you can go on to the next slide, Zach. So this is just the visual patterns. This is the, these are the ones that they do. Um, probably many of them do. A couple of them daily if they get a chance. If they're up in the plane, they'll probably do this, uh, you know, twice in, while they're up there and, um, it may be several of those patterns. Just to get some flight time in and then their whole pattern is up there by where the, uh, Spokane resident or the, yeah, Spokane tribe is. So. That's one of them. And that's just the visual patterns. That's when they're not, you know, they're not using their instruments. They're just using their eyes to see where they're going.
Right.
We can go to the next slide. And this is where they come in on those visual patterns at a close up view to, uh, Fairchild and Airway Heights. And so that you can see. They come in on several different. And so the way that they described it to me is that that A P Z, you know, that straight line that goes out from the, uh, runway. Is like a highway in the sky. And so they can, they can meet that at, I mean, obviously there's a, there's a breaking point where they can't meet it anymore, but. At any of those points that you see, they can, they can meet that to, uh, land safely. You can go to the next slide. So these are the, um. This is other inbound and other inbound.
And right.
Traffic from Fairchild. So I just wanted you to see there's a lot more going on than just, you know, what's going out over Airway Heights. And then this is, uh. That looks like the same slide, but, um, I may have forgot to add stuff to it. You can go to the other one, the next one. So I accidentally included the J L U S overlay, which is the joint land use study that was agreed by, by most of the partners except for Airway Heights, which was the nineteen ninety five land con, or the, uh. Contours. And so you can barely see it in there, but if you do the next slide, it should zoom in to the, that area. So that's all the other inbound and outbound flight paths. With the J L U S overlay, which is slightly different than what was adopted by Airway Heights. I don't know if everyone knows that, but that is, uh. The other one.
Now, excuse my ignorance, but what does the J L U S stand for?
That is the Joint Land Use Study that was done starting back in two thousand nine.
Got it.
Was, okay, that was basically, um. A holistic approach to preserve the base mission and what we do.
Well, it makes sense now. Uh, the, the reason I was asking the question, and this even goes back, you know, maybe a year or two ago, is I didn't understand. If the A P Z was because for safety, and I get that, why there were so many other flights coming in in other directions, which would, I assume. Have the same safety concerns. So I, I get it. I mean, I don't get it, but I understand it better.
So A P Z one, so let me just explain one thing. A P Z one has the highest, well, you're, yeah, A P Z one has a higher intensity of, of aircraft crashes.
Got it.
It's A P Z two, um, because of that turn, because of the turn radius that they're going in there at when they get into A P Z one. And that's just a lot of the times what their flying pattern is. And so less in A P Z two, but still a concern, right?
Sure.
So, yep.
Excellent. Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. And I don't know if there's more slides. I have no idea.
Yeah, this explains what my questions were.
Good, good.
It's good, good educational information for.
For me it is, yeah.
Next time if it comes up, please will know what we're talking about.
Yep.
Anybody, anybody have any questions for Jamie? Thank you, Jamie, very much.
You're welcome.
The information. We appreciate it. And like always, it's nice to have you on the meetings.
Yes.
Yeah.
Always, right? Uh, it is, uh, six thirteen and I'd like to open up the public hearing. Yeah, I'm gonna limit the speakers to about two minutes each. I don't know how many people have signed on. But, uh, uh, everybody is pretty much muted. So if you want to speak, please raise your hands in the Zoom software so that, uh, Zach can let you speak. And I'm gonna limit everybody to two minutes, but if there's nobody there and if we need more time, I will decide as we go. So the first public. Hearing we're gonna open up is going to be. Proposed two thousand twenty zoning map.
Yeah, so I'm gonna be presenting. So Heather, if you catch anything in the chat or anything, just let me know. Um, and then the commissioners feel free, if you have any questions along the way. Uh, feel free to ask. If not, also open it up at the end for questions. So. Okay, so let me share the screen first, all right? Here we go. Everybody see that? Okay.
Yep.
Yes. Okay, so we are doing the City of Beverly Heights twenty twenty zoning map amendment planning commission tonight. And I click that. So why are we amending the zoning? So the City of Beverly Heights are part of plan under G M A, which is the Growth Management Act. Uh, requirements for planning can be found at R C W. It's thirty six point seven A O four O. And without reading all of that, essentially what it says is that the comprehensive plan, if the, uh. Uh, I'm sorry, the comprehensive plan, the zoning essentially need to be consistent. We had to have consistency with the comprehensive. So the goals of this proposed amendment are to first ensure consistency with the twenty twenty future land use map. So the future land use map. Was a portion of the comprehensive plan that was passed back in June of twenty twenty. Uh, many of you were there for that process. Um, a second goal would be to ensure tribal trust lands are up to date as of twenty twenty. We've worked with, uh, S J Alliance as well as the Kalis School Tribe to make sure we have those as up to date as possible. Minimize floating zoning whenever possible. Floating zoning in our areas that are zoned that do not necessarily align with the parcel boundaries. So we're trying to align the zoning with the parcel boundary as much as possible. Um, that's not a hundred percent across airway heights, unfortunately, but it is better in this newer zoning layer than it was in the twenty eighteen. Um, combining maps for ease of use, I E, mixed use overlay seventeen point one six. So on this static map that we're talking about today, which is the, uh, the twenty twenty zoning map, we have included. Uh, the mixed use overlay as well as the J L U S, um, sound contours and A P C, uh, just for ease of use, just for when people are looking at the map and they're deciding whether, you know, they want to try to do a project in that area. They'll know that there are overlays with certain constraints. Updating the map with the latest parcel data from Spokane County, uh, the problem with static maps is as we know, the part, you know, they're static, they don't change with time. So the last, uh. Zoning map that was created was back in twenty eighteen. The parcel layer that was used to develop that is pretty old. Um, and there are also some additional challenges to that, which I will get into here in a couple of minutes. Uh, correcting errors and ensuring that errors that have been, uh, re-zoned between twenty eighteen now are accurate up to date. So there are a couple of reasons that have taken place between twenty eighteen and now. Um, those have been added to the zoning map. Those are part of this update necessarily. That's just something we're doing to make sure we're consistent with what we have. Uh, providing easily accessible zoning and land use data for our community. Uh, that isn't directly related to the static zoning map, but one of the goals of Airway Heights in general is actually to expand use to G I S technology. Uh, and I'm actually gonna be touching on that later in the meeting during staff reports, uh, for G I S stuff. So this is gonna be a part of that, just not quite. So this is the current twenty eighteen zoning map. This was adopted back in twenty eighteen. Um, this displays future in quotes parcel data and the reason the future is in quotes. So there are certain areas on this map that are not necessarily accurate to the parcel. Um, particularly, we're looking at the, uh, the residential up in the northwest corner. Um, for one reason or another, there were kind of lines put there that look like parcels, but those aren't accurate and never have been accurate to the parcel. So, um, that's an interesting feature of this map. Uh, includes zone areas that do not follow parcel lines due to limitations of G I S. And this map was, it, it almost appears to be patched, uh, maybe in Photoshop or Paint or something like that, certain areas. So there, there, if you zoom into it, it gets kind of messy really quick. So we're trying to clean that up. Um, it does not display the mixed use overlay. So as you'll see in the next slide. Uh, where that mixed use overlay is essentially, uh, along Highway two with the commercial, the C one and C two zones. Um, feedback from public indicated that the colors, especially in the residential zones, were too close to distinguish one, one from another. Um, and that's, again, another thing we're gonna talk about as we talk about these individual changes. The, um, residential zone, so if you look at this map, you look at the legend at the top left, you can see. Single family duplex residential multifamily are all three blue. The difference between the single family residential blue, the duplex blue, they're pretty close. Um, and there was actually a, an issue that arose because of that. And we are going to be addressing that again later in the presentation. Uh, parcel layer has not been updated or kept current. Again, this was a twenty eighteen parcel layer. Parcels change all the time. So we're trying to keep that as up to date as possible. So this is the twenty twenty future land use map. This was adopted in June of twenty twenty as part of the twenty twenty comprehensive plan. Uh, again, uh, sorry, let me do that. Here we go. Um, this was adopted in June of twenty twenty. And this was part of our comprehensive plan that we adopted earlier this year. Um, all included parcel data is accurate at the time of publication. I believe the last version of this map was done. Somewhere around June of twenty twenty. So the parcel layer is pretty accurate compared to the twenty eighteen. It minimized floating land uses as much as possible. So since this isn't zoning, this is actually land use. It, it's the same concept, though. We're gonna talk about this as we break down the changes that are in the zoning, including the mixed use overlay. So you can see that kind of, uh, checkerboard pattern that goes, you know, in that C one and C two. Along Highway two there on the city center, uh, shows accurate sound contours, A P Z zones. Again, you can see those, uh, those purple lines and sound contours and that green box is gonna be the A P Z one and two. And this also displays future current land uses not zoning. So again, this is land use not zoning, but since we're using the land uses to base our zoning on, this is going to be where we start with our new zoning. This is the proposed twenty twenty zoning map. So this was developed using the twenty twenty future land use map that we just saw. Uh, this displays the most current parcel data as of November twenty twenty. So again, with data, once you kind of print it out, it is what it is. So this data is up to date as of November twenty twenty. Um, it minimize floating zoning as much as possible. Again, we'll get into the details on that as we go through. It includes the mixed use zoning overlay. You can see the checkerboard pattern there. Uh, it shows accurate sound contours and A P Z zones, very similar to the twenty twenty land use map. And the colors have been purposely exaggerated to differentiate between zones. So if you look again in that residential area in the northwest corner, you can see multiple shades of blue. It's, uh, much easier to tell the difference between the three residential zones. You guys have any questions? You guys know, okay? Yeah.
Information.
Okay, so I'm gonna go through the individual changes that are being proposed within this. So everyone can kind of get an idea of what is old, what is in the future land use and what is new. So. On all these lines, you're gonna see three different pictures. So the picture at the far left is a twenty eighteen zoning. The, the, the center picture is the twenty twenty future land use map. And that's in the, uh, picture to the right is gonna be the twenty twenty. So the first area we're looking at, it's, it's in general called Raceway Recreation. This is, uh, the northern tip of Airway Heights. So this is the, uh, the Raceway Park and also the, uh, the Recreation Center. Um, so the change is being done here. Uh, we adjusted the recreational zoning to the parcel line. So you can see that, that brown club, it actually follows the racetrack. Instead of following the racetrack, we expanded that, um, in the twenty twenty future land use to actually just follow the parcel line. So, uh, that is, yeah. So you can essentially see that the colors are changing. The reason the colors are changing is because land use uses a different color set than zoning. So you're, you're more looking for the pattern than the color. The only thing we did not change, there's a sliver in this parcel that connects the, uh, the Raceway Park to the, uh, the Hafer Road there. So we kept that industrial, uh, just to keep the zoning simple for, uh, people who wanted to develop it there. Uh, there's also a sliver parcel located along Sprague Avenue. So if you look at the very bottom of these images, uh, there is like right below that, that brown club, there's kind of a line there. Um, and that's actually a parcel that, that's not mapping error. Um, had to go to county to check on that, but that is in fact a parcel. The reason we're changing that is it's zoned I one, but since all of the other zoning around it is converted to I two, um, we're gonna go ahead for that. That's I just for consistency there. North West Residential, uh, so this is again that, that northwest corner of Airway Heights. Um, first off, we're adjusting the parcel area to be as accurate as possible. Again, this, this gives you a closer look at what I was talking about earlier about some of the areas on the twenty twenty zoning map. Had, uh, what appears to be parcel lines that weren't necessarily, they, they weren't there, they're not accurate. So all of those individual lots that you see on that twenty eighteen zoning there. Um, those are never there. They, I, I don't, I don't know why they were there, but we're gonna go ahead and make those as accurate as possible. So in the twenty twenty future land use map, you can see that that changes pretty significantly. And that carries over to the twenty twenty zoning. Um, the future land use adopted for Hunter's Crossing in twenty twenty comprehensive plan. So Hunter's Crossing. Is one of the developments that's going into the northwest residential area along with, uh, a couple of other developments there. But Hunter's Crossing did, uh, go through the process within the twenty twenty future land use, uh, process within the, uh. The com plan. So they went ahead and did that to get those areas assigned. So the zoning is gonna carry over for consistency. Uh, open space zoning for proposed park and future Highland Village. So you will notice in the far right, there is a green parcel kind of tucked in there. The reason that it's, um, being zoned up space is because, I got it.
Zach, I can get the, manage the.
Sorry, they keep popping up in front of me.
I got it.
Great, thanks. Um, the reason that's being, uh, Highland Village has identified that as being a park. So we're gonna have that be consistent with the park setting. Uh, some floating zoning remains to be consistent with the Hunter's Crossing amendments. Um, there are a couple of areas you'll kind of notice at the top right. One of those parcels doesn't follow parcel line. Um, I don't know why that was, but it is the way it is. So we kept it just to be consistent. Uh, R M residential. So this is something we're actually gonna talk about a little bit later in our workshop section, but all manufactured housing and individual lots will, uh, will be converted to R one, single family from R M manufactured house. So. Uh, the G M A requires that manufacturers homes be permitted use within the R one. So any, uh, manufactured home that's located on a single family lot, we are proposing that that gets, um, switched over just to R one because the. After we get through the rest of our updates within the code, the, they're essentially gonna be the same thing. Um, the R M zoning is going to be maintained on parcels of manufactured home parks. So you can kind of see in the twenty twenty zoning in the far right, the, uh, bottom left-hand corner is still going to be in R M zones because that's where the actual manufacturer home park is, not necessarily manufactured home on a single family lot.
I have a question.
Sure.
Curious why we are changing, uh, from the R M to then R ones? If, if the manufactured housings are still standing and they're gonna be, why are we changing?
So essentially what is going on is again, we're gonna talk about this a little bit later because the, the code amendment is coming down the pipeline. So the G M A requires that manufactured housing essentially be treated just the same as a single family.
Okay.
So since they're pre-existing, i- i- and really honestly, since they're pre-existing, you're not gonna have a whole lot of change there. It's just gonna open up some options for people to use those lots for different reasons.
Okay, thanks.
Um, if I could just add, uh, Zach to the answer to this, the parcels specifically that we're proposing to change were all manufactured homes that were on individual lots already. Um, so the only ones that we propose to remain in the R M zone, which is also the zone that allows manufactured mobile home parks, which allow for units, multiple units on a single parcel.
Right.
Um, would remain with the R M zoning, but the other ones that we're again proposing to go to single family are all in individual lots today.
Lot. Okay, got it. Makes sense.
And, uh, also to note, this is just north of, uh, U S two. Uh, there are R M's on parts of south of U S two. We're gonna talk about those in just a second.
Okay.
So I guess my, my concern would be all of those are in the, um, sound contour that says manufactured housing isn't allowed. And so. Um, I know that we're, you guys have mitigating. Things for the manufactured housing in the A P Zs, but this is not something that's gonna be mitigated.
So Jamie, um, when Zach has completed with the presentation, the, uh, chair will open this up for public comment. Okay, we'll, we'll write down your, your question. Um, uh, to make sure we, we have addressed it, but um in case the plank commission is interested in this. Um, these are all existing lots that are already grandfathered with existing buildings on them today. Um, so the um the RM zone today allows single family and manufactured homes. And the proposed text amendment, when we get to that later on in this evening as a workshop, will also change the R one zone to allow manufactured homes and um, single family because the state law requires it. But the, the underlying biggest issue is these are all vested existing development. That all of these lots are already occupied with the manufactured home. Irregardless, they predate um J list.
Uh, right. I, I understand that.
Okay. So like I said, we're going to talk about the, the RF to the South Highway two. Uh, this is two pieces actually because they're really close together. So the RM manufactured home rezoning parcels to I one cover industrial. So these are the areas. So we're talking about that big purple clump there in the bottom right corner. The reason those were identified in this way, playing future land use map is industrial. Uh, what, it was really difficult because since they're within the APC, you actually can't develop any residential on them. So what we wanted to do was open up uses as much as possible. So when we were going through the comprehensive plan amendment process, we actually went through this and made sure that the land use was dissipated industrial. And that is now carrying over to the 2020 zoning. So that decision process in the conversations have already been done in terms of that. We're just doing this for consistency. Um, the second piece on here is the post office, which is being rezoned from public to C one uh for consistency with other privately owned parcels. So essentially the, the post office parcel is being leased. It's not actually owned by the government. So if they wanted to do something else to that parcel, it would be really difficult with a public zoning. So we're cha- we're just changing that to be consistent with the area. And also make sure that they're, they have flexibility for the owner there. Uh, South Side Recovery Well, parcels containing uh the city of Recovery Well rezoned by two to public. This one's pretty simple. Uh, there's a recovery well on the south side of town. As you can see there is an APC. So in the 2018 zoning, it was uh identified as I two. We're simply changing that over to public because it is sitting out and operated for our recovery. Tribal trust land parcels identified as being a tribal trust converting from C two, general commercial to tribal. So this is something we, we tried to be with uh, in sync with Cal's filter app as much as we possibly could. Actually down kind of to the wire on this, but uh, this is essentially anything that Cal's will try to put into trust between 2018 and 2020 is now identified in the 2020 future land use map. So the land use map, it's that um, that kind of hash mark there and it, it transfers over to the zoning, which is that kind of orangeish. So I, I talked earlier about the color differential, and this is where you're going to be able to see that. So the bottom left in the 2018 zoning, uh, that kind of looks like the same color, but it's actually two different colors. Uh, most of that is R one and some of that is R two. So due to a mapping error, a portion of Sunset Crossing was identified as single family on the 2020 feature land use map. So you can see how that kind of transfers over to the future land use map where there are two different colors, but they're all one color. Um, so what we are proposing to do is just to maintain what the future land use map has, which is this key, which is transferring that all over to R one. Main reason being is that all the homes located within that R two zone, they're all single family units. They're already built up. So any changes to the zoning wouldn't be significant. Um, the only changes would affect things like setbacks. Um, but again, i- it's all existing. This isn't future or anything like that. So we are just proposing that the reason stays R one for consistency with the 2020 future land use map. Okay. So lastly, during the SEPA review process, we received three different comments. Um, the first comment was received on December 29th. It's from the Spokane trap opinions. Uh, and they requested to still get case by case review on each project. It may require cultural surveys or monitoring. Uh, to that we responded, the updates to the zoning that will not have an impact on Spokane trap's ability to review and comment on individual projects. So again, the, the zoning map isn't proposing any development. Uh, we are simply uh just proposing updates to the zoning map to be consistent with our way. So uh, we're in no way um removing the right to have case by case review on projects. Uh, so we just maintain that. This one's going to take a minute to talk about. Sorry for the text. Um, I'm going to walk through it a little bit. So on the 11th of January, uh Spokane International Airport made a comment. Their comments was the Spokane International Airport ACC are missing from the zoning map. Uh, the SEPA checklist references Fairchild Air Force Base overlay zones, flight areas, sound contours. However, there's no reference to Spokane International Airport similar attributes. The SEPA checklist does not reference zoning code 17.15 or port overlay zone. Uh, the notice is only for the purpose of amending the zoning map, which a public hearing will be held on January 13. As everybody knows, uh, that was held on January 27th tonight due to that storm. The application will understand zoning code 17.15 or overlay zone is still draft form. However, there's planning mission workshop with zoning code on the same day. They're proposing that the zoning map, zoning code be reviewed and amended concurrently. So um, I'm going to go through this. I might have Heather chime in uh if I missed anything because there was a lot going on here. But essentially what we're looking at is the, the 2020 zoning map uh is zone specific changes that reflect changes made by the city council in June of 2020 in the comprehensive plan. Uh, land use map. See, very way heights airport overlay zone was adopted in 2008. And under current definitions does not include the areas. So I've included a map on here. Uh, and uh, this is going to be a spoiler because you're going to see this again later in uh Heather's presentation. But I, I think it's important to have a visual because there, as you can tell, there's a lot going on. Um, so essentially the current adopted definitions of the airport safety zone for airway heights does not have the CCs. So what the airway heights code uh that was referenced there being 17.15 recognizes is um Aoz's or not Aoz's, I'm sorry. Uh, if they recognize APCs, I think it's A and B. So if you see the orange and the yellow lines that are kind of uh in the right top there and the bottom left, they're kind of an extension of the airports runways. Those are what our code currently recognizes. Um, those do not touch the city of airway heights as a right. So the only overlay zone that does touch the city of airway heights is the ACC five, which is again, I'm sorry, this is a really kind of complicated map and there's a lot going on. But if you see, there's a blue line that kind of cuts through the industrial and heads north. It, it kind of cuts through Sipani there. If you guys can see that, um, that is the ACC five. So the only overlay that is uh that it applies to SIA, we actually don't recognize with the code currently. Um, Heather's going to be talking about an update to our Aoz, so our airport overlay zone code, which um would change that. But currently, right now, we don't have that. So that is the reason why it's not on our zoning map. Um, if and when that draft is adopted, we will add that. And the, it, one of the major things here is, is we're looking at the static map that I've talked about this idea of community access and GIS having dynamic maps. Once that is adopted, we will definitely have that layer available to use online. So people can see and understand that. But kind of putting this whole process on hold to um adopt that is, is not something that we were, uh, we were looking to do right now. So Heather, did I miss anything on that?
Yeah. So just to uh uh, help with this. If for purposes of the zoning map review under, we have a um overlay zone for the airport that was adopted. It was submitted to the state for compliance with airport compatibility and it was accepted. It doesn't currently overlay any of the city limits. So that's why it's not on a, a map that we're proposing today. The second point is um, when we go through the process of adopting new codes, including those that have visual representation um through a map, we can adopt those by ordinance and they still have regulatory effect. We are not um needing to go back to the original zoning map and amend it. What happens is um, if we adopt overlay zones, um, which we have in the past, we just had the presentation on Monday talking about the downtown plan, which a couple of plant commission members can remember, uh, which described that right now, we actually have something like 17 overlay zones in the city of airway heights. They're not all depicted on a static map, um, because there's too much detail. It would be too confusing to show that. But the point is, is that they individually, each still have regulatory application when they're adopted. So today we have no airport overlay zone. And we have J list and we have village square requirements. They all still apply and we're required to adhere to them. So um, the further um conversations that I had with Spokane International Airport is that they um uh work, provided that information and uh it is specifically about the um, the process of adopting regulatory control through an ordinance. And I, it seems that they're satisfied um with that response and we are moving forward in with, with them. I'm looking at um a modified airport overlay zone that uh would have a portion of a boundary uh that would overlay within the city limits. And I'll go into much more detail about that during the workshop later on this evening. So the point is um, I have been in continued communication since the 11th. Um, actually before that, months before that, and I think we've worked through um how we're going to um do adoption ultimately. Um, tonight's hearing and for um the workshop items, our goal is actually to eventually um potentially have these at council around the same time. But as you know, with scheduling, we may end up with some items on one Monday and a couple of items on the next Monday, but there won't be a big difference. So that the council will be able to see, just as the plant commission can see during this workshop and hearing the whole package and what potentially those impacts are. And it looks like um Cal is uh looking uh to be able to provide comments. Um, for some reason he's been muted.
I think you may have dropped out.
Thank you. So the second runway is a proposed runway, right? Future?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Heather. I appreciate that. Like I said, it, it, it's kind of a complicated thing. And as you can see with this map, it's, it's a lot going on. So move on to our last comment. So we got one more comment. This came in on the 22nd. So I believe it was last Friday. Uh, there was a voicemail left at the airway heights planning office. There was no name or callback number provided. So um, I was unable to uh, to reach this person, but I went ahead and just wrote out what um, this comment was, and I'll do a quick response. So the comment was, I'm concerned whether the zoning is increasing or decreasing because seriously cannot breathe. So basically I think you should decrease the zoning, less building or people are going to something. Um, so the only place uh where density is being increased in this proposal is within the northwest residential area. Uh, where those certain areas are going from R one to R two. The RM zone parcels on the south side of highway two, they're being rezoned to I two. They're actually losing their density requirements. So the density possibly may go down there, but all in all, the total density requirement is probably even or leaning towards a net loss. So these changes are actually proposing less density. But in terms of developments throughout the state, this amendment does not propose these specific developments, may goals to provide consistency with the 2020 future. So again, uh, our zoning map, it's, it's not proposing any development. So um, I guess that's, that's how we're going to respond to that. Um, okay. Um, with that, I will open up to any questions and Cal, um, back to you.
Thank you, Zach. Uh, uh, any, anybody signed up for public, uh, public comments? Anybody?
Uh, anybody? I'm Jamie from Fairchild. I, I do have a comment because I do feel like having the mixed use added is um the mixed use instead of uh, yeah, can we go back to the map? Um does affect things. Because now you're saying that mixed use is going to be residential. And so residential in that area between the 65 and 70 noise level contour isn't allowed. And so I've been racking my brain, trying to mitigate that huge development that's to the east of you know, on the eastern side of the city that you guys got from the county and all of these areas that are um incompatible with um mission. I, those are the things that I'm um, struggling with, I guess.
Mr. Chair, can I um help address that, that question about the mixed use designation on the map?
Please.
Uh, so the, the, it appears pink because it's a hatch marked over a red background. That's uh, that's exactly the adopted map out of uh 1737 uh showing where mixed use is currently permitted and it's the same map in 1716 under J list appendix B where mixed use is allowed.
Which was in 2018 when that was adopted? Is that correct?
Yes, it was amended and both maps were amended in 2018 in order to satisfy an appeal with regards to where residential mixed use. So it ha- it's required to be combined with a professional officer retail where it could occur in airway heights. And so this was accepted by Fairchild Air Force Base, Spokane International Airport, Spokane County and the city of Spokane, which were the repellents for that mixed use zone. So there's no proposed um changes. We're only taking those two existing adopted maps, which appear in separate chapters. And for ease of use uh for, for staff and for uh the community, we've over related onto this zoning map. So you can more clearly see uh where that mixed use is allowed. So under the current code, um, mixed use potentially could occur anywhere where the hatch lines are um subject to the requirements of the mixed use chapter, which allow um it to go through a conditional use permit application. So it's a case by case evaluation uh with development standards for that mixed use. Does that help um clarify the origins of the, the overlay that's?
Of course, it was before my time. There's always like, you know, um, people before that pay attention or not here. So we'll.
Well, that's like.
Yeah. Oh, so I would, you know, Zach Becker and myself are, are in the same boat. Um, I've only been with the city for 14 months and Zach's coming up on a year. And so um, we pulled out the legislative history um on this and discussed it with our legal counsel because he was the one that represented the city um on this and had actually uh had a conversation with Jeff Johnson as well to um to verify the maps that were adopted because the overlays that we're talking about here for mixed use became a, a specific discussion point last summer with the 2020 comprehensive plan about where we should be showing it on that map as well. So we were um showing base compatibility um inconsistency. I'm sorry.
Do you guys know the history of why you adopted these contours instead of J list?
Uh, the, the legislative record that I have seen the city of airway heights um during the um joint land use study called J list process that involved the county of Spokane, city of Spokane, um Fairchild Air Force Base. They went through several different um, sound contours to see uh what the impacts of those sound contours would be on airway heights. And it was mutually agreed upon, is my understanding that the 1995, which I completely um will admit is not the current mission in the current type of um planes that are flying, that was what was adopted as the base for um these lines that appear on the map. And the, the, my understanding from Jeff Johnson, when I, I spoke um with him from Fairchild Air Force Base was the recognition that these sound contours from 1995 represented a plane that was actually louder than the current mission and that it, it would um provide a greater buffer for mission protection uh because of sound impacts by adopting the 1995 versus um the flight pattern plus the sound of the current, the current mission um planes that are used.
That is true. So um, that is true whether you're talking about the 1995 contours or the J list contours. But I will tell you that the J list contours are not what is seen in your map because I was told you guys adopted the 1995 contours. So they're slightly different.
Okay. Well, um, I would suggest that.
Probably talk off.
Yeah, we can follow up absolutely on that. Cause I think we, we touched on this in, in last summer on the compliment too. So we'll, we work with you to verify um the sound contrast because our intention is not to certainly have anything um inappropriately depicted. the sound contrast because our intention is not to certainly have anything um inappropriately depicted.
I think you're you're showing absolutely what you guys have adopted. So what you're showing is accurate. I'm just saying my in seeing some of the other things in the past week or so of what you guys are planning, the J list contours could accommodate you a little bit better. That's what I'm saying.
Absolutely, and we um, well, we should have a meeting to follow up on that, but these are really good points, really good points and good questions. And the other question I think that you had um was with regards again to the northwest corridor, Jamie, uh with regards to the the mobile home and the sound counters. Um Zach, can you go back to that, ma'am? I promise I'd write it down and we we come back and talk about it. Yeah. So um in the twenty eighteen map, uh most of the purple, which is the residential um and manufactured home zone is outside of the sound contours. They're actually um below sixty. And uh this RM zone does allow for both individual single uh manufactured homes and modular homes to go in that zone. The um lots that are also purple that are within the sixty four to sixty nine counter, which would be kind of left and down in this image um is also currently in the RM zone uh and those are uh individual lots that uh for the most part and I'm thinking, oh, is there a street depiction? Would that be, that'd be Sixth Avenue extended? Those are also occupied by um by units, individual units on individual lots. And the, so the interface between the zoning and J list is J list is an overlay zone, so it's it's more restrictive and so it will actually control if there was going to be a new um development on one of those lots from the from the the future pink line downward within the sixty four to sixteen nine. That would be the controlling um factor and and yes, the J list prohibits manufactured and mobile homes. There are some other considerations which we have to um look at, which is we also have a nonconforming use chapter that says that because these predate the adoption of these base compatibility overlay zone um are J list um that there are some rights to rebuild or even replace units that are already there. So it's getting it um really in depth and we can follow up and have a more detailed conversation, but um for the plant commission, we're simply trying to align um what we're, what the state is requiring for zoning category and it it didn't make sense to continue to have a separate RM zone um because and and we'll get to this later this this evening, we can actually have our R one zone which prohibits um manufactured homes by state law. So we, that would be the base we're building off, but ultimately individual lot development will still have to comply with J list within the sand contours on an individual basis of whether they can have a manufactured home in that area. Hopefully that that helps, but we'll have a follow-up detailed conversation about that.
Teresa, you had written a a question in the chat. I'm gonna mute you. But I can in general say that there's no proposed zoning changes that'll affect that property, but if you wanna you did have a question about road widening, so I'm asking you, and if you wanna ask a question.
Did you unmute her?
Yeah, I I asked her to unmute. So we'll see. But in in general, uh she had written in the chat, road widening on West twenty first, um a company business building in front of our house, one one zero one eight West twenty first, how would this affect uh our property frontage? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, but the that this this isn't, that that's not a question that necessarily pertains to zoning map. So um that's something we can definitely address if you want to uh contact the planning office. We could talk to you about that.
So i- in summary, this zoning map is really gonna affect anybody drastically as far as current zoning is concerned, right?
Um, I mean, there are changes. I don't want to minimize this. You know, there are changes that there. The the idea though that most of these discussions were had back when we passed the twenty twenty uh comprehensive plan. So the big changes that are going on in the RM on the south side, we had conversations about those. Um Hunter's Crossing up north in the residential, we already, you know, had conversations about those. So what this proposal is mainly doing is saying, we're just adjusting our zoning to be consistent with the stuff we already talked about during that comprehensive plan conversation.
But if anybody were to real concerned about the zoning, they should, they would have wasted at this point, right? Just for the record.
I mean, I I don't personally, I don't see anything that yeah.
I can answer that question, um Mr. Chair. So um, so this uh zoning map, uh we did legal notice in the Cheney Free Press, which is our our paper of record. Uh and then to ensure that we were getting the word out with regards to the Sony map and the changes, uh the city did and all um P O box and address mailing. So every every address that uh the post office had received a postcard uh with information about the city's website where this this map uh is contained. It included a presentation exactly like you saw this evening, identifying individual areas that were changed. It included contact information for the planning department to ask questions about this change. And uh when we had the unfortunate postponement of the plant commission meeting from the thirteenth to today, we also put information out on the um city's website um to let people know about the date change and put it out on uh the city's Facebook page for social media. Should be people monitoring that so they be aware of the change of date. So um we did go above and beyond from just doing an individual notice in the paper and did notification by postcards to every address in the city so that we would have um a really good method to let our committee know we were looking at an updated zoning map. So up to this point, um correct me if I'm wrong, Zach, um how many calls have you received with regards to questions about the zoning map since the the postcard was issued?
Um about three.
Okay. And then we do have members of the public that are here. They have the ability to uh testify before the plan commission this evening. In addition um to that, should the plant commission make a recommendation to forward this map with the proposed changes to it to the city council, uh there will be an additional public hearing that the city council will conduct on the zone map uh with an additional opportunity for public testimony on the proposal.
Thank you, Heather. I I really appreciate the summary for the record. So later on, we don't have an issue. So I thank you very much. If we don't have any more uh public, do we have anybody who wants to make a comment? Teresa?
She she had commented, her mic's not working.
Oh, okay, alright.
So we will, it sounds like she has an issue outside of the context of the zoning map, so we can take care of that.
Well, if we don't have any further public uh comments or hearing on this matter, I'd like to close the public hearing at uh six fifty seven. And would like to open up for discussion with the planning commissioners.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I'm good.
Anybody, any of the commissioners have any questions or concerns?
No.
If we all agree, I would like to move this uh zoning proposed two thousand twenty zoning map to the city council.
One second.
All in favor?
Thanks, guys.
Let's move to the main body of the meeting tonight, the workshops, Zach and Heather, I guess.
We have action items.
Oh, yeah, we do. Oh, sorry, I apologize. Uh, we have an extra action item today to consideration of the planning commissioner candidates. And from my understanding, we have two openings open right now and both the candidates have to be residents of airway heights.
Well, Cal, we have one opening on the planning commission. There's two openings on the city council.
I apologize, maybe I.
No worries. And and you have uh, I believe I see three of the candidates in here. I'm gonna go ahead and ask them to unmute and I'll let you run.
Can you uh run through their names real quickly for the plant commission and the public?
Sure, Angelina Campbell Basso, uh Amy Havens, and uh Hank Finney.
Are they all here today?
Uh, yes, they are. Amy and Hank are muted. Angelina is not.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate you guys taking time to join us tonight. If you wanna just say a minute, a minute, about a minute of your your summary of yourselves for the as planning commissioners, I would appreciate that. Or if you guys have any questions. We have never done this before. This is the first time I I guess we're meeting our future candidates normally. We're just being told that they're gonna join the meeting, so it's a good opportunity for us to see who you are, who we are. And 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 if you guys have any questions, I'll I'll keep it open for about two minutes.
Might just wanna run down.
Well, who would like to go first?
Do you wanna start with us, Cal?
So you have, you have Amy, Hank, or Angelina?
I think Hank just volunteered to go first. Is that, is that correct?
Well, it was so silent, I thought I'd better break the silence, you know?
Thank you.
By the way, can you folks see me or not?
You see a picture of you.
A picture, okay. There's a, there must be an issue with a video feed. In any event, uh just a real brief uh synopsis of myself. Um, my wife and I are transplants from Redmond, Washington. She worked at Microsoft and I retired from the maritime industry. Um, one of the primary reasons I applied for this opening is because uh I felt that my background you know, would would contribute to your efforts here in airway heights. I'm a former chief executive officer of a public port in Oregon and um also a former vice president and chief operating officer for um uh major steamship line. And I've been in operations for probably well over twenty five years. And I've got a very wide breadth of experience from being in environmental managing to land use. Have it, you know, I've certainly had to deal with the zoning issues. Uh, and I know that's a a big part of what you guys do. So simply put, I just thought that my knowledge and experience might might be a good fit for you guys. And so I thought, why not put my name in the hat and see if there's a you know, maybe some small contribution I can make to to the effort.
Uh, thank you, Hank, very much. Uh, we appreciate your interest in joining the planning commissioner. But I really appreciate that. You have a good background, so it helps the the commissioners with the wide range of people.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Who's the next one?
Uh, either Amy or Angelina.
Just go with Amy since she was first on the list.
Hi, my name's Amy. I own property in airway heights. I've run a business there for the past nineteen years. But two years ago, I decided to no longer be hands-on, but I still own it. And I was just more interested in the ongoing workings in airway heights. I feel running a city is like running a business, which I've done since I was seventeen. That's why I was interested.
That's nice. Uh, thank you, Amy, very much for joining us tonight and showing your interest in you are a resident of airway heights, right? Correct?
I'm right outside the border. I've been, I'm about a mile to the east of the airway city limits.
Oh.
I own commercial property in airway. And I've been in this area since ninety two.
Um, I'm sorry, we we have the the fourth advocate. I'm sorry, the Riley's, it's Jeremiah Riley. I didn't make that connection. I I apologize, Jeremiah. I muted you as well. So there's one more to to talk.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Uh, next person is Angelo.
Angelina.
Hi, I'm Angelina Campo Basso. Um, I have a master's of science degree in urban regional planning and tribal planning, and I'm also an Eisenhower recipient twice for transportation planning. Um, I actually, I've actually been doing planning even before my degree over almost three thirty years of planning. Um, I actually helped the Kalispel tribe turn their land there in with helped them do some trust um turnover there for their economic development. Um, I've worked for in Indian country for about twenty five years in planning. So I know the Spokane Tribal uh Council and the Kalispel Council. And I currently work for Eastern Washington University as the cert com program manager. So I currently am doing research for seventy one tribes in the western United States on climate change. And so I really believe climate change and uh clean and green fuel and uh is the way a lot of communities need to start leaning towards sustainability and resiliency. Um, and so I'm, I, a lot of my efforts are on that. I'm also a board member of the three fifty Spokane Climate Change. And so I really believe I'd be a really good asset and um assisting you with the with the tribes at the same time and having all this experience. And I've done comprehensive plans. I've done zoning. Um, I've helped build clinic roads, uh lots of economic development. Um, transits, I started transits and expanded transits. So I have all kinds of experience from community planning, transportation, transit, comprehensive planning, um economic development in urban and rural planning and also tribal planning, obviously. So uh I and and I live here. I've been living here since, actually off Lawson and Third there. Um, I've had a home here for almost six years. And uh very concerned about this area, of course, especially with Fairchild and um what happened with the water contamination and all. So I I would be a very hard worker for this commission. And thanks for um letting me join your meeting tonight.
Thank you, Angelina.
We have Jeremiah.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Jeremiah Riley. Uh, I wanna start off with just letting you folks know that I am not a resident within the city limits. Um, so please take that into consider duration. I know that that was uh one of the requirements that was listed on the application I filled out. Uh, but like one of the other can uh uh potential candidates that was listed here, uh I too own a commercial business in the downtown heart of uh airway heights. Um, in two thousand fourteen, we purchased the scrub it up car wash. Um, and then shortly after purchasing that business, uh we did an extensive remodel and then most recently here uh two thousand nineteen uh when the city was redoing third, I think it's thirteenth or fourteenth avenue uh out in front of us, we re-did our parking lot to kind of match what the city was doing. So um I do not uh reside in the city limits, but um I have a significant, I guess, financial um tie to the city limits and what things look like. So uh I have a construction background, um construction management mainly. Uh, started in structural steel erecting and fabrication, moved into commercial concrete. And then in the last uh six or seven years, we've uh been running a successful And then in the last, uh, six or seven years, we've, uh, been running a successful excavation business. So, quite a bit of construction, different, uh, different trades, uh, throughout my career. Um, once again, own a business in the heart of Airway Heights and would just like to be considered, uh, to be on this planning commission, um, as a volunteer. And if you guys allow me, I'd be greatly, greatly work hard to, to, uh, my experiences in place. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate, uh, all of you joining us tonight. Uh, I've been on the commission for quite a while, and this is the first time I've seen four candidates show interest. Normally, the, the vacancy stays open for a long time. And we can't find somebody to take the place, but I really appreciate the interest that everybody is having. And also your contribution to Airway Heights' future. So, but I, I believe that it's not up to the commissioners to decide who we pick. I think the city council does that, right? If I'm correct, so stuff.
I don't think so. I think it's our choice.
No, uh, the commission can provide a recommendation in the city council.
Okay.
So, if you guys wanna have a discussion and provide a recommendation, that's something you can do. Uh, but it is the city council's final choice.
Right, final choice, of course, certainly, yeah. Um, I'm not sure if anybody can clarify this or not. I'm not sure we can have a personnel discussion in open session.
Um, I think that you are certainly, um, able to ask questions about the qualifications that they've put forth, um, or to have a dialogue about your experiences as, as plan commission members so that the candidates are, um, able to hear more about the type of work you do, um, or even issues that are, um, certainly before the plan commission today. Um, this is not a, a situation of employment. Um, each of the four people have come forward as volunteers and potentially to be official volunteers for the city of Airway Heights. And so, um, in that line, it, it probably wouldn't certainly be appropriate to ask any, um, personal issues, uh, or, you know, health, um, related issues or, um, you know, having to do with, uh, you know, family, et cetera. But you certainly could, could talk about the past experiences that they've already indicated they feel, um, brings them forward for, uh, qualification, um, or, um, further questioning that.
I guess what I meant was in, in terms of, uh, arriving at a decision or our suggestion to move on. I don't, I'm not sure that's appropriate here.
No, it's not. I agree with you because it would be unfair to the four candidates that we discuss that and however we discuss, yeah. I don't think it's fair.
Yeah, I agree.
Come up with a way to make recommendations. Uh, I, I don't know if we can do it through email within the commissioners, but I understand the law says we cannot do that. It has to be a public meeting, right?
That's right. So you can discuss, if you desire to, um, amongst yourselves, make a recommendation, um, of one or more of the candidates, you are able to do that, um, during this meeting. The agenda's been posted. Um, whether you feel comfortable to do that or not, um, but you would not be able to have a discussion and deliberation outside of a public meeting. Um, that, that is a requirement of, of state law. And so we did do a special notice, um, in the paper for today because we had to move your meeting. And so you have a quorum of the plan commission. So, if you, um, don't feel comfortable making a recommendation, um, all four candidates will be forwarded to the council. Um, and the council will, uh, have the ability to make a, a final decision on, um, an appointment and, and would be confirmed by the mayor.
Okay, so let me switch gears. Um, I forget our, our buildup of who lives where and who owns property in the city. Can someone bring me up to speed? I know I live within the city, but I can't remember who else.
Uh, I'm, this is Cal Patel. Uh, I don't live in the city. I live in Medical Lake, but I have a business in Airway Heights.
Right, okay.
The same situation as Cal. I, I live in Airway Heights.
So the requirement of the ordinance with regards to the plan commission is that there are a minimum of three members of the plan commission are required to be residents. And with Eva's, um, departure from the city, she, she moved out of the city. Um, she resigned from the plan commission. And that is the reason that the notice that was put out in the quarterly newsletter, onto the city website, onto social media, uh, was indicating that the applicant, uh, by the code was, uh, needing to be a resident. Now, the ultimate decision is the city council, as we just discussed. Um, and so all of the applicants who came forward are being presented to you, and all of the applicants will be forwarded to the city council as well. Um, for tonight, um, it's really whether or not you would like to make a recommendation.
Well, I think in, in keeping with our, I'm assuming it's in the bylaws of our makeup as a, as a commission. Um, if you don't live in the city, I'm not sure that name could be forwarded. Am I missing something?
Well, we still have to forward all the names. The city council would still make that determination based on the makeup of what is allowed for the, for the council.
It's, it's not our, our ability to screen the applicants, where we would take all applications and forward to the council. And the council has the same criteria, uh, before them, which is the ordinance with regards to the makeup of the plan commission. Um, but we wanted to be open and, and equitable to all the candidates and invited them per the request of the plan commission this evening so that you could meet them.
Okay.
No, it's well appreciated that we got to see the candidates. Normally, uh, the city council's job is very easy because there's only one candidate for the position. And I think in the last five years, this is the first time we've had more than one person apply for the position.
Agreed.
I, I don't think that, I don't wanna be the one to decide out of all four candidates who should join us because it'll be unfair, uh, how we make that decision. But the only thing I like to tell the four candidates is that, you know, we have a meeting once a month. And even myself and other commissioners, we do find it difficult to find the time to make that meeting. But it's a commitment that, that if everybody holds up to it, it, it just helps them, the staff and, uh, like, public hearings and everything moving faster. Because every time you miss a meeting and you reschedule, it's a month gone by. So, my thing is that if you decide that you wanna do this, it's a commitment. And it seems like once a month, but it's still difficult, right? Everybody has something to do or something comes up. So, you know, that's, that's the only challenge I see that, you know, can, that we'll go through.
Right. And I, and I guess my only, and I appreciate all four of you coming forward and volunteering your time. Because, yeah, it is a volunteered position, and it is time-consuming sometimes. Um, we meet, we've been trying to meet the city council in joint meetings every now and then, which is, I think, very productive. Um, and I think that all of you can, you have all different experiences that could easily lend itself to, um, working with the commission, which I really appreciate. My only reservation again is, if our bylaws say, here's the makeup, that's how I would go. So, thank you all for joining us. And, yeah, if our job is only to push forward the names, I would suggest we do that. And move on, you know?
So only two candidates out of the four will qualify if their residency, uh, closes. Uh, like Art said, is, is an important factor in picking the candidates, right?
That was my understanding.
I mean, there is no, uh, gray area in there because I think, um, Mark and myself have taken up the position for businesses in town and residents out of the area.
Right. But, as Heather pointed, if our job is only to move the, them forward, then I, I say, yeah, but with reservations, because two of them don't meet the criteria.
Well, I think we should forward the names to the city council, but I think, uh, we had a good opportunity tonight to meet the future, uh, planning commissioners, which is very nice. And like you said, you know, if, all four of them have different experience and
Right.
in our makeup, all, the current, uh, commissioners, we're all from a different makeup too, which helps everybody, uh, move forward. So my recommendation would be to move all the names to the city council and let the city council make the decision.
Okay.
Because for us, this is the first time, right? We've been in this situation.
Yeah, that's true.
And normally you just go straight to the city council.
In the past, uh, the applications have gone straight to the city council. And if, if you recall, this last fall, um, we were updating the plan commission on the number of applicants. And we discussed, um, taking the step where the plan commission have an opportunity to meet and speak with the candidates. And the plan commission embraced that and asked that that occur, um, so that you would get to know the candidates a little bit more as, as a potential, uh, future, uh, working, um, in a partnership on the plan commission together. So, um, this is the first time we've done this, and, uh, it's been a little bumpy along the road.
I didn't expect, I didn't expect, uh, the, 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 the difficulty in picking the name.
Uh, well, I, I think that the bumpy part I was referring to is it took a little bit longer because, um, it, you know, the city council wanna make sure we advertised publicly for the opening of the, um, commission position, which we did accomplish. The plan commission wanted to ensure that we had adequate time to consider, uh, or allow people to apply, um, which so that date was January first for application deadline. And now we're a couple of weeks later because we had, um, a natural disaster in Airway Heights. And, uh, have, um, fifty percent of our residents didn't have electricity. And I'm not sure how many didn't have Comcast. So if you did have power, you didn't have internet. So, um, unfortunately, we got a little more delayed. But, um, I think this has been a great dialogue, and I think that's really been a chance to learn a little bit more about the candidates. And, and for them to hear from you about what your experience is as commissioners, um, and to hear and see an actual a hearing and, and see the type of issues that the plan commission grapples with.
Yeah, I'd like to just apologize that, uh, we're not able to pick a name to move forward. Um, it's, I, I, I just have to apologize for that, but I really appreciate this dialogue that we had tonight to meet the candidates and see who is applying for this position. And as we move forward, the, you know, I'm not saying anybody's gonna leave, but if we have a position open, at least we have candidates that have shown interest that we can approach later on too.
Right, I agree.
That process might be even faster than this one, you know?
No, I agree. So what's our next step then? Is it a formal motion or we just move on?
Um, I would say it, it would be up to you if you wanna buy consensus, move all four candidates forward to council, or we could take it as a motion.
Oh, well, I moved to move all four candidates forward to the city council for consideration.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, um, we will be, uh, making sure that this gets on to a city council agenda. Um, the city council, uh, well, actually, the city administrator and the city finance director already has all the applications because they were forwarded as they came in. Um, and we will let you know what that date is, uh, for the city council for discussion and consideration of a plan commission member appointment.
Another quick question. Um, when it comes time for the city council meeting, can we go as ourselves invoice who we would like to see on the commission with us?
Hmm, interesting.
Um, I think that is a tricky question because, um, you as an individual can represent yourself and your, your business and your personal matters. But if you attend a meeting representing yourself as a plan commission and two other members attend the same meeting, we have a quorum. And therefore, um, we have an issue with appropriate notice, um, that you, uh, as a commission, were together in a quorum. So, I'd say, um, it's, it's probably not, um, appropriate unless that's something that you really wanna do as another joint meeting, and we do a special notice so that
Yeah. If it were a joint meeting, yes, it would be appropriate, but you're right to point that out. True. That's why you're here.
Hit me with another question. Um, is there, if I may, uh, Mr. Chair, are there any questions from the candidates, uh, of the process and moving forward from this point that we can address? Or certainly, you can feel free to contact Zach right by email or phone.
I guess.
I was just gonna say, I, I worked with Zach too at Eastern. Um, he was one of our GSA researchers, and I am so impressed, Zach, with your presentation tonight. Um, you are just like off and running.
Don't feed, don't feed his ego.
Yeah, everybody No, everybody needs support and to hear that they're doing hard work. And Zach did a great job. That was a super, um, complicated discussion about the time that's elapsed and how we're getting to this point, um, to update our zoning. Absolutely. All right, well.
Does anybody need a break for a few minutes before we move into the workshop? If not, we can move forward.
I'm off moving forward.
Yeah.
Let's go to the workshop. Uh, I'll hand it over to Heather.
Absolutely. So I'm going to, uh, pull up the first document, uh, which is, um, actually, I will pull up a map first. And yay, I have sharing privileges. Apologies for the delay. It takes a little bit, uh, to get. So can everybody see a wonderfully brightly colored map over an aerial, uh, photograph on your screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. So I'm gonna use this as a visual before I bring the text up. So I, I think it'll help bring context to the conversation. Um, so this one entire package that we're going through, from the zoning map to this topic on the airport or relay zone to adult family homes, et cetera, are all requirements that a city is supposed to achieve in order to be considered consistent under the Growth Management Act, which is a revised code of Washington law that, um, the entirety of Spokane County is required to comply with. And so growth management includes things like having a conference of plan, um, having zoning consistent with that. It also, um, has requirements for us to do, um, planning for investment in our infrastructure. It, uh, it requires us to do transportation planning, et cetera. But there's another section, um, to that law that talks about, um, the ways in which our development codes and our zoning has to be consistent with other state laws beyond growth management. And so when we were doing analysis of what it would take for us to come into final compliance, um, there were some zoning codes that while we adopted them, um, after our initial conference of plan in two thousand and six, laws changed, or, um, there were some inconsistencies we found that we need to correct so we can come into full GMA compliance. Why is that important? Um, well, it's a state law. Um, it also, once we're fully in compliance means that the city is eligible for, uh, grants that are available for parks and transportation. And it also avoids, um, further down the road, the possibility of, um, penalties assigned by the city for, for not being in compliance. So it's kind of the big picture of why we do this. So there's a master checklist that we use. Um, we've toyed with the idea of actually popping that up on the screen so you can see where all these RCWs come from. But basically, we did initially comply after we adopted our first conference of plan. And we adopted, uh, an overlay of protective zoning around the Spokane National Airport. And we were required to do that because one of the components of growth management is that if you have an airport next to or within your jurisdiction, you have to have compatibility with land use in order to protect, uh, that airport in the future, in the long term. As you know, air, land uses can conflict potentially with flight, um, similar to what Jamie has talked about, um, earlier in the previous meetings about a land use and the mission of Fairchild. So, So, in this map, um, the orange and yellow represents what we, we did adopt in two thousand and eight. For a protection area around the airport and as you can see, it's not in the city limits. As a matter of fact, our city limits in two thousand and eight was all the way back at Hayford Road because most of this area was still in unincorporated Spokane County. So from two thousand and eight, jumped to two thousand and twelve, in two thousand and twelve. The city Spokane, Spokane County and Spokane International Airport went through a joint planning effort to redefine safety. Areas around the airport, including their proposed third runway. Because there's two runways today and they're gonna expand something and do a third runway. Um, and that resulted in a new methodology and some new. Proposed areas that there would be potentially limitations on development. The city of Airway Heights did not participate in that process and they did not ultimately adopt any of those designations and so. We are unique in that we don't have the type of protection protections as extensive as our surrounding. Jurisdictions, which are Spokane County and the city of Spokane. Uh, what we are today proposing to do is join into. That same set of standards that the city Spokane and the county adopted. To further ensure the mission of Spokane International Airport and. Uh, we've put together a map to show what those new areas would be and to um. To adopt similar zoning as it applies to the city of Airway Heights. So, if the count, the plan commission, um, we move forward with this proposal. Um, the, the line that's most important on this map is actually the blue line, so can you see my, my cursor running down the blue line?
Yes.
Okay, that is called um ACZ seven, five, sorry, ACZ five. And that is a protection boundary around what would eventually be. The third runway, um, which has not been built, so. Uh, following my cursor on the screen, there are two existing runways, which you can clearly see the tarmac, you can see the terminals. Um, this is a proposed third runway, but because um. Planning trades to get ahead of development to ensure that we're not um adding a very intensive use. Um, we haven't considered what's happening around that property prior to the development of that intensive use, so. This boundary, the ACZ five, is essentially the only boundary in this proposed. Zoning we're gonna talk about that would actually overlay over the city of Airway Heights and it would be for a future. Runway, which is Airway Three, so any questions at this point?
Heather, how would that affect the, uh, if you adopt the blue line? And say hypothetically, they build a third runway, how would it affect the zoning and um? Uh, businesses in that blue, blue area? Because I think.
That's a good question. Um, so I'm gonna pull up the uh draft. Um, so we can run what, through what those changes look like. Can everybody see the text, this was in your packet as well? Probably the biggest change. Uh, to the, the airport overlay from what we have currently in our code to what this proposal. Would um be really this table. So I'm just kind of scrolling down too, hopefully it's not making you sick, if we do that. And um, this is what the ACZ stands for, so it's the Spokane International Airport Compatibility Zone. So, it would um include a list of uses by a commonly agreed category. Of whether it's permitted, it's not permitted, or it would be allowed or limited under certain circumstances. So, the biggest change is now that some of those properties that would be within the blue area. Would be subject to a new standard that would say that it would be limited, not permitted. Um, or, or would be allowed to be outright, because remember, our map today. Doesn't show any overlay with the airport into the city limit, so there is no impact with regards to. Um, any kind of immediate safety zone, which is actually called um, Safety Zone A and Safety Zone B in our current code. So, um, it would have the possibility of limiting. Uses with the overlay for the intention of protecting the public because of a, of a future flight. Uh, pathway related to the third runway and would limit them, so. For example. Um, and I, this is where it's gonna be a little bit, I'm gonna have to pop back and forth between the map and the text. Um, ACZ one on that map is essentially the area immediately at the end of the runways. So, of course, um, in our current zoning code for airport overlay in this one. We aren't allowing houses. At the end of the runway and technically this is out in Spokane County, so Spokane County, which has adopted this code, is not allowing a house at the end of the runway. Um, the ACCs creates concentric circles a little bit uh greater in size. Um, and this is how the, the um uses relate, so in particular, the ACC five, which is the only one that touches. The city of Airway Heights, um, residential uses are proposed to be allowed in, in limited circumstances. In that limited circumstance uh is right here. Where we're proposing that residential uses are permitted when the underlying zone is also residential. Except no mobile homes or manufactured homes um are permitted, now this also makes this proposed draft consistent. With the requirements that we put um similarly for Fairchild Air Force Base for J-List and I believe Jamie Kowalski mentioned this earlier. But in J-List, we also don't allow for mobile homes and manufactured homes in these types of safety zones. Um, it also would not allow residences if the underlying zone was commercial industrial. So this is probably the biggest um impact is we're going from, from no regulation to having. Um, uh, for the immediate safety zone because it says that, that it's at the end of the runway. Now, there is some overlap between our current airport overlay zone and the sound contours. Um, so we're proposing to go um with allowing residential if it already is zone residential. So let me go back to the map. So we can see what that um. Appears as more specifically.
I don't think we have any mobile homes currently in that area, right? Mostly is industrial and R one.
I uh, do you, don't believe there are any manufacturer mobile homes in the blue boundary at this time. Um, I, I, so right now, the gray, the light gray and the dark gray. On this is reflecting zoning, so there's light industrial for light, uh, the dark gray is heavy industrial. There are some apartments that already exist, um, and that's the blue right here. Um, these were permitted when they were in Spokane County, um, prior to coming into the city of Airway Heights. Um, and you can see the blue line comes across here and this is Sakani. Um, which is all single-family individual lot development with uh constructed homes. But um, we can go back, we can go back and see.
Deer Park is the apartments and there's one on Hayford.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say on Hayford.
On Hayford Road, there's a. What I'm part, I didn't see, I didn't pick up on that.
I think Heather.
Mark, can you repeat that?
I don't know if I'm remembering correctly, but I think they're on Hayford, um, past the auto yard. But before you get to the apartments, there's a manufactured home there.
Like where um is there on the screen about that area?
We can go back and, and take a look at um what's on the ground, um. But if it's there, it's, it's grandfathered, it means it pre, it preexists. Um, a code that would uh restrict it, what this would do is it would apply to. New uses.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Uh, repli, it would apply to replacement or new uses in, in area. So, do you want me to go back to the text to see what um ACC five says about industrial and commercial uses as well?
I guess it doesn't limit it, does it? Industrial? It was a L. He says if it's industrial or commercial, it's left alone, right?
I'm just gonna pull up the table so you can uh see it. And I believe uh Jamie Kowalski uh had raised her hand, she had a question if the chair wants to recognize her.
Uh, is it in concern to the zoning? Uh, I don't know. Yeah, if she, I, I don't have a problem, but if she can keep it brief.
Um, I believe that uh Jamie is muted, did she just get unmuted?
I did, I just never know when I get to ask questions.
Go ahead.
So, I, I'm just wondering, so inside the blue area where um. Uh. Is the, I can't remember, ACC five or whatever. So, are they going to expand residential u- uses within there? Or you're saying that they're going to limit all residential units, uses?
The proposal is to uh allow residential, but only if it's already a residential zone. And not allow residential in a commercial or industrial zone.
So does that? Yeah.
So there won't be any new residential, it's just existing.
But if it's, like, some of that land was granted to you guys, so is that land going to be granted? Per the, you know. Growth Management Act to be residential. That land adjacent to the current residential that is incompatible with Fairchild land use. Do you know what I'm talking about? I'm sure you do.
No, um, the, I'm not certain what area that.
Where your hand, where your hand is.
Mm-hmm.
Over to the east a little bit, I believe that that land is being granted to you guys per the. County. Or maybe it's a little further, what, maybe it's a little further east.
So I think what you're, you're referencing is that the property owners. Um. That own land north of Deer Heights. Which would be uh toward the top of the screen. Uh, they've applied to. That's actually right in here, this little spot right here.
But, yeah.
That property owners have applied to Spokane County to modify the urban growth area boundary. And the commissioners are not aware of this because um the application just came out yesterday for um review.
See, I don't know. My apologies.
No, that's okay, this is a, this is a public workshop, um, so if the, if the, you know, chair recognizes you, we can talk about it, so. What Jamie Kowalski's referencing is an application that just came into Spokane County. To modify an urban growth area for the city of Airway Heights and to. Include about a hundred and eighty acres located up here in the city's UGA, the purpose of an urban growth area. Is to identify an area that urban development will occur and when it's associated with a city. Then the idea is that within a, within a twenty-year window. That that property um would eventually become part of the adjacent city. So. In, in a twenty-year timeframe. Um, that doesn't mean.
Sorry, go on.
So, that application is going through Spokane County, um, they've not made application to the city of, of Airway Heights. Um, but that would be something in the future where this map, if it was adopted. And it became part of the city would impact it today, because Spokane County. Already has this code, they are already allowed residential because they're, the Spokane County code allows residential in the ACC five.
Also, we wouldn't adopt the same.
So I guess, I don't understand that Spokane County was supposed to adopt J-List and they just don't. I, I, I don't know if they're just not. It's already been zoned for that, so they're not gonna change their zones for that. And maybe I need to consult the county for that, but that, that doesn't make sense to me, I guess.
Yeah, well, I think that's a follow-up question for both Spokane County and we can follow up and, and talk a bit more about it now, but um. I think uh, the question we were um just discussing with the planning commission was that. Um, none of these commercial or industrial areas, and there's some public land right here in the green. Um, in that table, um, there would be an overlay of additional restrictions on it, which we'll. Pop back to in just a moment. Um, the residential, um, this is already developed. And what that section ACC five says is that if it's commercial or industrial, we wouldn't allow for new residences in it. If we adopt this overlay zone, but if it was zoned residential, we would, so at this point, it's. Um, there isn't any property eligible to become residential at this point. If we were to adopt this map because it's already been built.
Okay.
And the other vacant land would not qualify to have residences on it, I think answers. Both Jamie Kowalski's question and the plant commission's question, um, but I can also go back to what the. The proposal would have for uh other requirements for commercial and industrial and their ability to develop in that area. Um, and so it comes back to this table and it's broken down into what's called high intensity use, which is non-residential. Um, vulnerable occupant, so these are types of uses that, um, you know. Uh, I believe it's defined as like hospitals, um, and other uses where you have. Um, density of population that are, are more vulnerable if there was to be an accident. Um, there's community infrastructure, hazardous uses and low intensity uses on the table. So again, looking at table five, um, we would be limiting. Um, all of these uses in ACC five and permitting critical infrastructure and low intensity uses under this draft and again, this is. Um, I just want to mention that this is almost verbatim, the city Spokane's airport overlay zone, but I have made changes to it. Based on requests by Spokane International Airport um to update things such as um. Uh, distances for uh. The area around one of the designations and be consistent with their requirements about how to process an administrative height exception. But I just want to get to the uh categories. So here's a description of the categories, um. Residential uses um are considered incompatible due to additional safety concerns and sensitivities in the ways. This includes group living, single-family duplexes, apartments and condominiums, it doesn't include hotels and motels. High intensity uses are those that have potential for a large impact um in a small area. So, that can include arenas, concert halls, uh lodges, gyms. Um, community centers, etc., uh libraries, uh campgrounds. Um, eating and drinking establishments, retail sales, etc. Vulnerable occupant, uh, where the majority of the occupants are elderly, disabled or children. Critical infrastructure um are those that would have a significant adverse impact if they were destroyed. Such as public health and welfare. Um, hazardous uses, um, are those that discharge smoke, steam, particulates. Um, exasperate aircraft, um, likelihood for accident or attractive to wildlife. And low intensity uses, um, are those that don't concentrate people or hazardous materials, they're not sensitive to loud noises. That can include agricultural uses, uh kennels, um. Commercial parking vehicles, quick vehicle services be like a, a, you know, oil change facility or a brake change facility. Mini storage warehouse, um, manufacturing, publishing, etc. So let's uh go back to the table real quick.
So Heather, can I ask a question? This is Jamie Kowalski again. So because that airport overlay zone for Spokane International Airport and the ACU's lines intersect, are we looking at all of the like, what's the lowest level of what you can do on that property? And not just right now what the airport is allowing? Because, you know, of course, I'm looking at the residential that we've allowed somehow that, you know, I've only been here for so long. So I can't do anything about the people that have been here before me. But um, I see a lot of residential in our noise contour zones. And, you know, that's allowed in special, special instances where you cannot see where you can absolutely not build anywhere else for residential besides where you want to build right there in our noise contours. And I just don't see that in the West Plains. So that's, those are my questions.
Uh, well, it, it sounds a bit more like a statement than a question, Jamie, but let me cut, pop back to the map. Can everybody see the map?
Not yet.
Let me, uh, that's one of the, the default um, with uh, Zoom is it won't let you change while you're, you're actually sharing a screen. So I have to go back out and do that. So um, if your question was examining land use um, with the application of the ACC five, which is the only one that goes within the city boundary. Um, the answer to that is um, that we would be following um, the same descriptions of land use intensity that Spokane County and the city Spokane did, and that we would be identifying limitations uh, with regards to future uses in the city limits based on that table. So um, the vulnerable um, occupant, the hazardous material, um, those um, that are in the table, um, identify whether they'd be permitted or they'd only be limited um, to be allowed in certain circumstances. And we've just, uh, and again, looking at the map, um, there isn't any additional, within the current city limits, there's no additional area that's zoned for residential. So there would not be residential, um, that would be eligible to be developed within this ACC five as well as the underlying zone because the existing residential's already been built.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Let's, let's definitely talk further. I, I, I feel like we had, we're on the same page in so many ways. And then I feel like some other things are going different ways. So I definitely want to talk.
Sure, absolutely. Well, um, the plan commission, um, this is just a, an overview. The goal was to do a workshop so we could get into some of the nitty-gritty between what we had versus what we're proposing. Show you the map, um, show you the text as indicated. Um, we have already received comments from uh, Spokane International Airport. There's one additional um, element that they're adding, they asked to add to this particular map. They have their own sound contour. Um, so uh, we just received that yesterday. And so we'll be looking at potentially adding that to the map. Um, but we're looking to more move this forward with the other items in the package, uh, potentially to a plan commission, public hearing, um, sometime in the future.
This needs to be done, whether we do it today or whenever they build a runway. So it would probably be better to do it now than wait.
Technically, no, we already have an airport overlays on where none of it touches the city. And so um, we could stay with the existing airport overlay zone. And so um, we would simply have different regulations than, than Spokane and Spokane County. Um, we're suggesting this because it brings us um, consistent with those restrictions, but we're not required to do so.
Okay. But in doing this uh, this overlay, it's not going to impact anything that we're working on right now.
Um, you know, we could certainly go through in more detail and look at the commercial and industrial because that's really the only question about um, how it would impact future commercial or industrial property within the ACC. Um, you know, i- is there going to be additional area added to the city in the future? That's a question that'll probably get answered over the next year. Um, with, whether it will or not, and how, how this could apply versus how the same standards applying to that property today. Because it's adopted by Spokane County.
Any other commissioners have any concerns or questions? Any? I think we could probably move this forward and, and take it to the next step. Uh, I think, uh, I don't see a big impact. There's something that needs to be done.
Well, thank you very much. I apologize um, for putting this first on the agenda. It's probably the, the most complicated of all of the.
I guess it was important because it was important because it relates to your zoning uh, changes too.
Well, thank you very much. We'll, we'll work on moving this forward and we'll set up a meeting with Jamie Kowalski uh, to go in more detail through this map and, and the proposed text as well.
Thank you, Heather. Uh, you still have quite a fit of things, workshops to go through, uh, adult family housing?
Adult family, yes. Uh, so this will be probably a little bit um, easier uh, to go through. I promise, in shorter. Again, and going back to that checklist uh, with growth management, um, it requires us to not have provisions in our development standards that discriminate uh, against those people that are protected under the Federal Americans with Disability Act. And oh, looking through our code, uh, one area where we perceive that we actually were requiring a higher standard for a protected uh, type of use um, was for the adult family homes. So specifically in uh, one of the statutes, the revised code of Washington seventy-one twenty-eight, it prohibits any jurisdiction from uh, requiring more requirements like a special application process, in this case, a conditional use permit for adult family homes than it would for any other single-family residence or ever a single-family residence is allowed by the underlying zone. So keep in mind, if a single-family residence is not allowed there, this won't be allowed either. But if a single-family residence is allowed, the state law requires us to have adult family homes. And adult family homes are residents in which persons are provided personal care, uh, can be special care, room and board, um, up to six adults that are not related. And um, the state of Washington Department of Social and Health Services has a process to actually allow for that to go up to eight people. So what we've proposed in order to come into compliance with the state law is to add the definition based on the state uh, definition of adult family home. And we also have proposed to add it to our residential zones uh, per the statute so that we would be allowing them as an outright permitted use just like every other residence. So how many people um, are, have been familiar with or seen or become acquainted with an adult family home?
I haven't.
I have.
Well, you probably shouldn't because they'll look just like the house next door. The, the idea behind an adult family home is simply that inside that home, that there are people living together that require additional care because um, they're at least eighteen years of age and they have a disability and they require additional assistance. Now, those people could be younger with a disability. They could have Alzheimer's, um, they have a variety of dementia, they could have healthcare um, needs that require them to be in a, in a home setting, in a group setting where they're, um, provided support. So that's essentially what an adult family home is.
There is a larger impact, depending on how many employees are working there though, with vehicles and traffic going back and forth than you would have at a normal residential home.
And what the stat, state statute says is if we have parking requirements for a single-family home, we can apply those parking requirements to an adult family home, but we cannot require greater parking requirement. Yeah, that's right, additional. Um, so um, there uh, may have, um, you know, certainly um, in-home care, you know, there may be uh, one or more individuals who live in the home as well that are caretaking. Uh, so essentially this text amendment would modify our zoning matrix to add the adult family home and would allow it just in the residential zones uh, and not permitted in the commercial zones consistent with our other zoning standards. And it also proposes to add it to um, our, our one. And uh, is by default, it would be allowed in the R two because the R two allows any residential use in the R one and then also in the R three zone. So again, this would be going into our residential uses category um, as a permitted use subject to the licensing requirement of the Department of Social and Health Services and the size limitations that the state of Washington places on these, which is six and under um, additional permitting up to eight individuals.
So basically you're just uh, get, being current on the, on the regulation. I mean, you're not making any changes. You're just trying to avoid a lawsuit, I guess.
Well, we're, we're trying to ensure that we get to consistency with the code and that um, that we're abiding by what already exists as a state law requiring us to do so. So I can tell you that we had an app, um, someone who believed that they were going to have to get a conditional use permit in twenty twenty because of the way that the code was written and they were an adult family home. And after consulting with our legal counsel, we advised them they did not have to get a ca- a conditional use permit because we would be in violation of the state law.
You finished?
I am. I think it was only ten minutes too.
I know, I just, sometimes I don't know if I should stop you or if you go on. Uh, any commissioners have any comments on this? I think this is just something that we need to move forward.
It's a matter of getting us up to date, so.
Yes, I agree. It's an action item, I assume.
Yes, we'll, we'll be uh, uh, seeking to move this forward to public hearing as well with, with the remainder of these package items.
Let's do that. I guess everybody's in agreement.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. With that, I turn this back over to the chair.
Uh, next item is essential public facilities amendment. Zach? That's still there?
Yeah, yeah. Haven't talked in a while. It's weird. Um, let me get this up real quick. So I'm, I'm probably going to be even quicker than Heather was there because this stuff is, I mean, it's regulatory. And so these last three items are all items that are on that same list that Heather's been referring to. Uh, in this case, the essential public facilities, the city of Airway Heights is responsible for adopting development standards consistent with the Growth Management Act. This proposal adds chapter seventeen point three eight, essential public facilities to Airway Heights Title Seventeen, identifying and providing a citing process for essential public facilities in conformance with RCW thirty-six point seven eight point two hundred. So essentially essential public facilities are what you think they are. Um, airports, uh, regional uh, transportation have stuff like that, big things. Um, the, this process is already been codified as an interlocal agreement back in two thousand and three. So essentially all we're doing is adding language to our code to formalize that. Um, this language is very, very similar to the text that appears um, throughout the Spokane County specifically, I believe. Uh, Spokane Valley, but yeah, essentially we're just um, laying out the process for the citing of essential public facilities. It doesn't even happen at the city level. It happens at the county level. So we're basically saying the process needs to go to the county. So it's very, very simple, very straightforward. It's a regulatory thing.
Anybody have any comments? Okay, we'll just move that forward too. I think everybody's in agreement.
Yes. Appreciate it. Like I said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and get through these pretty quick because they're all, they're all.
Why don't you just go through all of them? Manufacture housing amendment?
Okay, let me.
Manufactured homes.
Yeah, let me get that one up real quick. I know it's getting late, guys. Apologize.
Yeah, that's the price you pay for missing last meeting.
Okay, uh, that's great.
I wonder know why you're still wearing a tie.
Wearing a tie for you guys. Like, I wasn't wearing it earlier. Okay, so the second one is uh, manufactured homes. City of Airway Heights is responsible for adopting development standards to ensure that manufactured housing is not regulated differently than site-built housing consistent with RCW thirty-five point two one point six eight, thirty-five sixty-five point one six zero, thirty-five eight point two one point three one two and thirty-six point oh one point two two five. This proposal is to amend Airway Heights musical code seventeen point oh six point zero three zero permitted uses in the R one zone to include manufactured housing. Amend the definition of manufacturing mobile homes within the Airway Heights musical code seventeen point four uh, to be consistent with the definition, definitions provided within RCW fifty-nine point two point oh three oh and amend Airway Heights musical code seventeen point oh seven point oh three oh permitted uses within the RM zone to be consistent with the requirements of RCW thirty-five point six three one six oh and thirty-five twenty-one six eight four. So, sorry, that was a lot. Um, essentially what I'm saying is we are allowing manufactured housings within the R one zone because it's state law. So what we did was we amended the R one, which is single-family housing, to include manufacturing housing. Um, our code currently allows modular housing. We're removing that um, because modular housing, manufacturing housing are different. So we added that to the permitted zone, forbidden uses within the R one. We also went through uh, and added some language to the RM code to be consistent with the new definitions that are within seventeen point oh four oh one three zero. So manufactured homes, this definition is pulled from the RCW. So we, we're just trying to be as consistent with state law as possible. So we adjusted this and then we also had a mobile home. Um, mobile homes, um, where we don't deal with mobile homes, they're, they're built prior to nineteen seventy-six. But having that definition in this context is important. So essentially we're adding two definitions and then we're adjusting uh, the permitted uses to be consistent with those definitions within the allowed uses of the R one and the RM. And that's it.
Just a quick question. Manufacturing, manufactured homes are physically tied down on the property, right? When you compare to the mobile home?
Um, so this is the definition of them right here, actually.
All right.
So.
I can read that later.
Absolutely. A quick answer is they're still built on a chassis. So they can be, they can be placed on a, a foundation, um, or they can be supported in some way beneath. And then, you know, by aesthetic choice, people can put cribbing, um. Oh gosh, it's getting late. Uh, they put a curtain around the exterior of it to to uh, cover if they choose to cribbing, which is just elevating it.
Think, I was thinking of a prefabricated home. They build off-site and name, or it's.
That's what I was thinking, right? No, you're right. Yeah, I was thinking of that, you know, when they bring it over and they put it on.
Modular, yeah.
Modular, right.
It looks like a regular house, but it's.
So, so here's the clarification. Our current code talks about pre-manufactured or modular as if it's manufactured. But, but the state definition and the building codes do differentiate with them. And so we're being really clear so we're consistent. So a prefabricated home or modular home is treated by the building code just like a stick-built home. So it gets a building permit. And while it could be manufactured off-site and placed under the building code, um, we would treat it like a single family. It would just be outright permitted. It's, it's manufactured in mod- modular that have state definitions um, and also have a different process in labor and industries um, would be responsible, for example, on, on the mobile homes for, you know, placement, you know, movement additions and those kinds of things. So it was really important for us to make sure we were, we were consistent by utilizing the state definitions for, for this application.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Uh, next item is comprehensive plan amendment, frequency amendment. Zach? Sounds like a long, long workshop.
Last one, I promise. Okay, so this last one, city of Airway Heights is responsible for adopting development standards consistent with the Growth Management Act. This proposal adds section seventeen point oh three point oh eight five comprehensive plan amendment processes frequency to Airway Heights musical code seventeen point oh three, providing a timeline and process for the annual amendment process for the Airway Heights comprehensive plan consistent with RCW thirty-six point seven eight point one three zero two. Um, so very, very simply what we're doing here, which is again, we're. Um, so very, very simply what we're doing here, which is again required, we we talked about this list from uh from DOC and this is the last piece on this. We're required to essentially have a time window for when we accept applications for complaint amendments. So what we did was we added that time. And we also added some additional language to discuss um the process. So we we already know the frequency is you could only uh do complaint amendments once a year. But now we're looking to codify that time period where you should let us know you want to do that so we can consider them all.
That's it?
Yep.
Anybody have any questions, concerns?
No.
Okay, if none, now just move forward with that too.
Thanks, guys.
All in favor, right?
We need a motion, right?
No, it's a workshop.
Oh, sorry.
No workshop.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no, uh, we're gonna close the workshop and move to commissioners' reports if anybody has anything to say.
I have an off-the-wall question, and maybe it's inappropriate, but I'm gonna ask you. In our city, are those big like construction sheds allowed in front yards?
What do you mean by a construction shed?
Like, I forget the name of them. You buy them at Lowe's or Ugly Ducking or you know, they're fairly good sized, can be.
Not a garage.
So.
No.
You can put a, you can put a a shed in your backyard. Um, if it's over two hundred square feet, you need a building permit.
Front yard.
Um, so every structure still has to meet the the required setbacks. So there is a front yard setback, but theoretically, if if the house was fur- far enough back that there was excess room um to have a shed or or another building, you could do that. You just have to still meet the building setbacks from the front. You'll have them from the side and then you'll have a maximum square footage allowance on your lot for all buildings.
It just looks, it just looked trashy when I saw it and I was wondering if it was legal. Thanks.
Yeah, there there's always perception about.
Testing you.
I.
If you think, if you think it's a violation of the code, you send it over to the code enforcement.
Right.
Take a look at it.
Yeah, that would be Christina Blake.
Thank you. That'll work.
Anybody else? I just wanna say two things. Uh, one thing is that in the last couple of months, I've been working with Zach very closely in reference to the meetings. He helps me prepare a lot, so I really appreciate that a lot. I've never seen that before and I was shocked when he calls me a couple of times a week and we're discussing things. So I really appreciate that. It makes me feel important now. And the second thing is that, go ahead, Al. Oh, go ahead.
Cal, I can, I can say, I have to comment. You're running them much differently than, you know, like six months ago. And I know when I was school board president, the superintendent and I would meet every month before a meeting to do exactly that. So it shows both of your works. Both of you guys have done a great job. Thank you, both of you.
Thank you.
Uh, there's been a good part of it, but I just wanted to acknowledge that. And the second thing I wanted to say, I I I think that going forward, we should have joint uh city council meetings on certain items. Because I was able to learn a lot from this previous meeting in reference to the safety issue that came up and questions about sprinklers and everything. And then when we just discuss among ourselves, I don't think the discussion goes any further. Uh, but being being having both bodies together, I think educational and also experience-wise, it's a good idea. So I would encourage that going.
Yeah, I wasn't able to attend that because I was working, but um I was any uh any key or anything good takeaways from that meeting on Monday?
I think the biggest thing that uh that came out of that is the council members. Some of them felt that adding sprinkler systems uh and adding the cost was not a big factor if it if it, you know, safety issues. So it was a mixed message that I I felt that, you know, they felt like the developer should pay for it if it's not inexpensive. But the bottom line was the city council did say that they would like to investigate and look at the cost structure in adding sprinkler systems to uh future, future development. And if Heather wants to add anything to that, it's more welcome.
No, I I think you covered it very well. Uh, there was the discussion of the downtown plan and the downtown zoning, the the and daily.
Even the down, the down, oh, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead, Cal.
Oh, you go ahead, please.
Well, I was gonna say, I agree with your comment about the joint meeting. I learned a great deal. We've been at now twice in the recent past and each time I've come away. Also, I agree that the city council was open to doing a study and a further research about sprinklers as we move forward with our growth. So I think that was real productive and it came from us. So, yep.
It gives us a, it gives us some way to make decisions on our own, knowing what the city council or the city is expecting, you know, rather than being in in the dark and not knowing that we're doing something and how far. But it was a good educational uh meeting, I think. And also downtown uh uh presentation was outstanding. I mean, I've seen it go from just a couple of sentences to a nice concept now.
Yep.
Agreed. Nice. But I don't have anything else. Mark or Shane, anybody else?
I don't have.
I think everybody wants to go, right? All right, if there's no more further comments, I would adjourn the meeting at eight fifteen P M.
We got staff reports.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right, staff reports.
All right, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be quick, but I do have a couple of things, so.
No, go ahead. Sorry, I apologize.
Oh, you're fine. No worries. Okay, so I wanted to share with you guys some uh some quick tools that one is available right now, two, I'm gonna make available for you guys, but will not be available till the public for probably a month or two. Um, the first one that is available, and this kind of came um from Art. Art, you've seen this already. But I'm going to, for what you want, we can talk separately because I, that's a whole other thing, but for this now. Um, so essentially, uh, Art had had some questions about development within the city, wondering where things were going in, if there is a tool for that, and there actually is a really good tool for that. So if you go to the Airway Heights, um, the website here, if you go to departments and you go down to uh building and you just click on the building department. Right here, there's an online building inspection request. You just click on that.
Zach, the image is not keeping up with your speed. There you go.
Now it is, yeah.
All right, cool. Sorry about that. Um, essentially what this does is it gives you a GIS layer of the active permits in our system. So if you're wondering where development are going in, um, you can kind of see clusters going on over here, some of the res- residential developments, but um any of these, you know, this is, these are all our active permits. So if you want to know what's going on, you can, like, for example, like I worked on this one the other day. Um, so what is it? Where is it at? You can view the permit. It'll give you some detailed information on that. So this is available to the public. I just quickly wanted to show you guys if you you are curious, like, oh, what's going on over there? Um, you do have access to that information. It's publicly available, so.
And what I didn't know when you first sent me the map, and thank you for sending it, was, yeah, duh, me. If you click on the little dot, it opens up into exactly what it is, which is really very informative. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Um, and I'll 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 talk. That map you had requested, um, the windstorm was like that afternoon or later that day. So, you know, we'll get back to that.
That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, the second piece here, I wanted to show you something I've been working on for um a long time. Um, actually, all of us have been doing a lot of work on it. Uh, so this is our yet-to-be-released uh City of Airway Heights GIS page. So what this is, is our our digital mapping hub. So right now, um, I'm gonna send you guys a link to this tomorrow. But again, it's not live, it's not for the public yet, but I do want some feedback. So if you guys have a chance to take a look at it, give it a drive, let me know what you think, any comments. Essentially, there are three active maps right now. So the two up here, Airway Heights Public Works, you click on that. It will take you to a loading screen. And after the loading screen, it'll give you a legal notice. But this is essentially a digitized version of our sewer system. So if you're wondering if there are, is sewer or um where your sewer's at in the city, all of these individual lines, you click on them, it'll give you length, diameter, materials, um, all of this additional information here. Um, this manhole cover will let you know where it's at, stuff like that. Um, you can click to all sorts of stuff. It'll give you a legend over here, tell you, so Airway Heights is the green, the city's Spokane, existing lines down here are the purple. Um, the future lines are the blue, so if you're wondering where stuff's going in, the red are the forest lanes. So this is a, this is one of the pieces here too. If you don't like the background, you can change it. It's a, it's pretty flexible. You can do all sorts of stuff with this. So this one, you guys probably have super interested in, but it's there. Uh, the second one I'm gonna touch on real quick is really similar to the sewer system, but it's the Airway Heights water system. Again, it's gonna say, hey, don't use this for stuff. But again, you're looking at all the uh the fire hydrants, all the water lines. You can click on all the water lines. It'll tell you the size and if there's any particular notes on that material, stuff like that. So there's your water valve, water line, all that jazz. So those are two of the maps. And then the last one I wanted to show you that you guys might be a little more interested in is the twenty twenty future land use map. So I had had touched on earlier, um, when I, when I was giving the public hearing about this map in particular, which is the twenty twenty future land use map. So this is cut straight out of our um our comprehensive plan. And this is showing, you know, the APC, the J-List, the mixed use overlay, all that. If you're curious what stuff is, you just click on that, single family. So this is all the land use categories. This isn't the zoning. Uh, zoning isn't up yet because we're in the middle of, you know, possibly adopting a new zoning map, so I didn't want to take a ton of time to do that. So um, what you can do with this, again, it'll give you all those overlays, but this also links Scout. So all of these parcels in the city and actually surrounding the city, uh, you have the ability to say, okay, well, I, what is going on with this guy here? And then there's a data link. You click on that. And it actually links you straight to Scout and it'll give you information on who owns it, how much taxes they paid, pictures, all sorts of stuff. So when I, when I talked about that idea of um, having quick access to the community and and why I wasn't too worried about like the idea of the static map is this is kind of the future where we're going with our mapping. This is what we want the public to access because, you know, they're ne- they're necessarily not interested in the whole city of Airway Heights. They're interested in, you know, this little parcel over here. So you can click it, get information, get your zoning stuff, take a look at how that interacts with the um the sound contours, if it's in the APC, if it's in the mixed use. And eventually, you know, depending on how things go with the uh airport overlay zone, those will be in- integrated into this as well. So if you want to, you can turn stuff off, turn stuff on. It's completely manageable. Again, you can change the base layer. You can do all sorts of stuff. So, um, again, it's not live yet. Um, this has been something we've been working on for a long time. But um, I'm gonna send you guys a link to this tomorrow morning-ish probably. So yeah, if you could just take a drive and then um maybe next month uh provide some feedback, you know, what you like, what you didn't like. This was annoying. I couldn't see this, whatever it is. Let me know. I appreciate feedback, so.
You, you, you've been busy.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's really.
He's giving, he's giving a new image to the city now, which is good.
Yep. Really nice, very interactive. I love it.
Thank you, Art. But yeah, um, that's all I have for you guys. I just wanted to show you some tools that we have and what we've been working on to kind of not only help us internally with, you know, the sewer systems and stuff like that, but also help the public have access. So now when we get phone calls asking about, you know, where the sewer line is, we can direct them through our GIS page and they can learn all about it.
Nice.
Zach's done a really good job and it's a, it's the first ever dynamic geographic information system that the city's ever had and it will create a base that we can continue to add to. So as we've talked about numerous times this evening about all these overlay zones, it will be much more transparent to a developer, to a resident um, as well as city staffers searching an issue about what the the development requirements are for that piece of property, because we'll now be able to see it as layers over a single piece of purple part, a parcel and be able to understand um what the implications. So while yes, a code may say, yes, you can do this, but then an overlay zone says, no, it's gonna really help um, with clarity and and eventually, you know, as Jamie's product issues of compatibility in the future.
Well, and it's re- it's real time, not a static map.
Yes, we can, we can add to it as we move forward. So remember in the zoning map discussion, uh, we have almost three years of zone changes that we had to catch up on that map because it was a static map that was only published, you know, every two years at best. Um, and now we can immediately begin to add, um you know, zone changes or or other things. And then one of the layers that we hope to do is actually go backward in time and add in historical information. What's the file number? And what was the zone action? When did it occur? You know, kind of solve this, you know, digging through your boxes. And so, you know, Jamie's talking about, you know, she's only been here for a couple of years. We've been here for less. You know, we, you know, so we have, are creating a count, a continuity of the record, you know, backwards and then, you know, creating a record moving forward we can rely upon and our our commissioners and legislative body can rely upon when we're making decisions about land use. Um, but that, that's great. We're gonna planning to um brief the city council in a couple of weeks about this map as well. So you're the first ones to see it. Uh, we'll probably do a actual launch of this as a publicly available uh website. Once we have the zoning map um through council and adopted, because that's one of the critical layers that we need to have. And we think that the public will be asking for that. And if we post it earlier, we're just gonna get barrage with questions about where the zoning map is. So um, probably this spring is when we'll go public with the map um for timing. I just wanted to mention two other items. One of them kind of came up earlier. Uh, there is a proposal to amend the urban growth area uh to swap um some land on the north side of the city where the Spokane County offered vehicle park is. It's currently in the city of Airway Heights Urban Growth Area for a hundred eighty acres uh further to the east. That application, um, we know that it was going to be submitted for months and months, but it it actually just occurred and the county just sent out the notice yesterday, I think, um, and is firmly circulating that application for comment. So um, they need to, whoever the the property owners would also need to apply to the city of Airway Heights to modify the UGA. We've not seen that application. Um, we would expect um that they would if the county were to to approve on their part an urban growth area boundary because at the state level, it's the county that adopts a UGA. Um, and we would be expecting them to submit studies identifying what they're proposing to do with the property. And we'd have an opportunity to review it um and integrate if the city wanted to pursue this as a part of a comprehensive plan. Um, they could do a separate plan or do an individual comprehensive plan amendment. So just giving you a heads up that's out there. It's at the county level right now. We've not seen an application for this uh directly to the city of Airway Heights. Uh, the second item is that the council has identified doing a new comprehensive plan as a high priority for the city. Uh, we just did the update in uh June of last year. That was to get us into compliance. Uh, this next plan is a revisioning uh many aspects of of Airway Heights. So we're working uh to create a request for proposals that we will send out probably in the next couple of weeks um for a consultant to do the work, including public engagement leading us through a new visioning exercise and assisting with some of the technical elements of the update of the plan. And so I just want to give you a heads up for your work um in twenty twenty-one and into twenty twenty-two that we will be starting to see uh work around, looking at and accepting a public engagement plan, um being involved in the development of a new vision for the plan and eventually a plan uh that'll probably come um for uh review and adoption probably toward the end of this year and into twenty twenty-two. Um, so um, and then the final thing is that the Smart Growth America grant we received in twenty nineteen for uh twenty thousand dollars to do an intervention on one of our streets for public safety purposes uh for pedestrians and bicyclists uh was suspended because of COVID in twenty twenty. Um, the Smart Growth America, which is a federal nonprofit organization, uh wants to move forward with uh the project. So we'll be uh working March through July of this year to identify a location with a stakeholder group uh that's interjurisdictional. We have um tribal members from Kalispel and Spokane, Spokane County, um SCA, Washington State Department of Transportation, um State Department of Health, uh, so state, the county health department are all involved in the team to identify a location where we would do basically traffic calming, which is the idea of we would do a temporary installation in a, in an area where we've identified an issue with um, speed or safety and identify in this temporary measure how a real project, a physical project might improve safety at that location and improve health outcomes. So part of the issue is access, so access to food, access to health services and and kind of looking at that larger project. So we'll be bringing some concepts uh later this spring to the plant commission to take a look at. And if you start to see stray straw bales. Uh, later this spring to the Plan Commission to take a look at, and if you start to see straight straw bales. Um, and, uh, plastic cones and pre-paint on the ground as a temporary installation, you'll be able to tell the community, know why. And that we applied to, uh, a federal, excuse me, nonprofit, um. Organization in partnership with the Center for Disease, um, Control and, uh, the Federal Highway Administration to try and prove, uh, health outcomes for our community. And.
Oh, so we'll have input to that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring some concepts that the, that the team has been working on to the Plan Commission to take a look at. So the goal is to identify. Areas that, um, have need, um, then we walk through, um, uh, you know. Why we would select one side or another, we would do public engagement around that, and then we would do an execution. Um, actually implement it in July. So again, remember, this is a temporary installation. It's not intended to be. Real concrete and pavement, but it's supposed to, um, demonstrate what we can do, uh, with relatively little funds. And it's a twenty thousand dollar grant we received.
Thank you. We're also, we're working with, uh, Watch dot S R T C, the Spokane Tribe, Kalispell Tribe, uh. Who else am I missing?
Um, the Health District.
Yeah, Spokane Regional Health District. S T A, so it's not just Airway Heights doing this. We have a, a handful of people on this project, so.
Yeah, we were one of three cities in Washington State that were selected to receive the grant. The other two were the city of Bonnachie and the city of Arlington. And that's it. I mean, that's, we have a lot of other things going on.
Yeah.
Sure, guys, okay. Uh, if there's no further comments or anything, I'll adjourn the meeting at, uh, eight thirty. And thank you, everybody, for your time and effort tonight. I know it was long, but we appreciate that.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Have a good night.
Good night.